So we'll call this meeting of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District. Today is September 27, 2018. Can I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to medical employment history and appointment of employees and discuss negotiation matters regarding the CSEA unit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Posed? So we're going to begin returning back to open session. Can I have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As you'll find on your, in the board docs, there's been attachments made to 7.2 and 7.3. And there was an add into the agenda, 11.7. That's, we're going to be appointing Denise, our delegate to the New York State School Boards Association Annual Meeting. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Posed? So upcoming events, October 5 will be the Go Home Early Drill. Students will be released five to 10 minutes early usually.
Fifteen.
About fifteen minutes early. On Monday, October 8, there will be no school. It is Columbus Day. And October 11 will be the next regular board meeting. Now we come to Pride, 6.1. Our student board member who normally does Pride, his soccer game got rescheduled for tonight, so he is not available today.
Chicken down on the ring yesterday.
Yeah, so I did not, we just found out, so I don't really have a sports recap, but we can catch up at the next meeting. We did have, and Doug attended, we did have a ribbon cutting for the new playground at Violet Avenue Elementary. It was great to see all the students out in the field, and it was really exciting. It was long overdue, and it, playgrounds are not cheap, but it's beautiful, and it's violet, and it's right there at Violet Avenue.
Very violet.
Very violet, yeah. I guess it's purple. Homecoming is this weekend. Today at FDR High School was Green and Gold Day, hence if anybody's picked up on the color scheme here up front. But 6 o'clock tomorrow night is the Parade of Presidents. Tradition started a couple of years ago where all the athletic teams do a lap around the track to celebrate our entire athletic department. And the homecoming football game is at 7 o'clock.
7.1 Superintendent's report?
Yeah, a couple of things. On October, and I, we just sent out the press release today, and then we'll be using full court press with all of our social media, school messenger, everything we have. The Hyde Park Central School District and the Red Hook Central School District are hosting an evening with the nationally renowned speaker and author Ray McNulty on October 17 at 6:30. This is the kickoff to our district leadership team meetings this year. Ray is a senior fellow at the International Center for Leadership and Education and the Dean of Education for New Hampshire University. He was also in his past the Commissioner of Education for Vermont. Ray is the author of It's Not Us Against Them: Creating the Schools We Need. Ray believes strongly that education systems cannot wait for the children and the challenges to arrive at school. Rather, schools need to reach out and help forge solutions. Parents and educators are welcome to join us and to learn more about future-focused schools and the role of rigor, relevance, and relationships in teaching and learning. He works with Model Schools, Bill Daggett. Some people in our area have gone to one of Bill Daggett's presentations. He's a senior fellow at that same organization. So our academic commitment to the four Cs is very much aligned with Ray and Model Schools and their message. So again, we'll be getting all of that out. We'll be inviting student teachers from Marist and Bard, and certainly our Reinbeck friends, and all educators and parents are welcome to attend. I just wanted to share that Senator Serino on September 13 wrote to Commissioner Elia about the condition of our North Park Elementary and has asked her for any assistance in the future in either moving our capital project forward or any monetary relief, et cetera. Just kind of putting it on the radar. So that was very nice, and thank you to Senator Serino for sending that letter in. There was a regional meeting, a week, last Friday, seems like a long time ago, there was a regional meeting in Duchess County. All of the Duchess County schools were invited as we've all been dealing with the same issue, Arlington, Spackenkill, Beacon, Dover, Weebytuck, you name it. Everybody was pretty much there. I don't know if we had a rep from every single school district, and so it was facilities, directors, superintendents, and anybody we wanted to bring. John Evans, who will be presenting in a few minutes, was there. Brian Calandria from Bosie's Health and Safety was also there, along with Greg Burke, the legal aide from Niskus, and Mike Lambert from Sean Pearlson. And basically, the conversation was twofold. The financial management, each of us had an opportunity to share in the county what we were experiencing and how much money we were spending on remediation to date. So it was a way to look at advocacy for assistance, whether it's financial or just how to manage all of the misinformation, if you will. So that was a very productive meeting. I was there for most of it, but I had to leave towards the end. So that was a countywide meeting arranged by our local Bosie's. Attached, before we have John come up from Adaptive Environmental Consulting, attached to the agenda is a copy of the letter from Senator Serino, as well as the letter from our school physician and our costs and our summary of cost and in time and materials for North Park Elementary. And I think we're up to $113,000, which is less than some of my colleagues around the county, so there was that.
Excuse me, Grue. The letter from Senator Serino, I just wanted to clarify something. I mean, she says that the school district has been dealing with mold issues for the past five years.
Right. She had that incorrect, yeah.
Right. That's not true. Okay.
Yeah, I did clarify that for both Sue, and we'll work to make sure the commissioner has that too. But yes, you're absolutely right, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to 7.2, North Park Elementary Update. John Evans from Adaptive Environmental Consulting of New York.
Well, good evening to everybody and our guests here as well. My name is John Evans. I am an industrial hygienist for Adaptive Environmental Consulting Group. We are a national industrial hygiene firm that focuses on indoor air quality and issues related to mold, asbestos, radon, volatile organic compounds, and their impact on building occupancy. We focus mostly on commercial buildings, hotels, casinos, hospitals, and schools. My firm is a New York State licensed mold assessor firm. You're required in New York to be properly licensed as an assessor or a remediator. You can't do both in New York. The licensing framework was put into place due in large part to the damage that was done after Superstorm Sandy. And basically, the rules are if you are going to be conducting assessment, you can't also be a remediator, and you have to have a license from the Department of Labor. There's a biannual renewal period where they review things like your insurance and your participation in the program. When I was called by North Park to come out and take a look, the fact pattern that was presented to us, in addition to what was available in the news media, was that there was an abnormal environmental condition in the school, that the school district had done what it could with the resources available, and that testing had been conducted after that work had been completed, that indicated that the air quality had improved substantially. I first visited the school on September 17. I revisited the school on September 19. The engagement for my firm was to conduct air sampling in all occupiable spaces of the building, and also to conduct a visual assessment and an air quality assessment of the building itself. My engagement allows me to use all sorts of different cool toys and tools when we are conducting our assessment. These are things that are provided by our company that allows us to say to a reasonable degree of scientific certainty, is there an abnormal mold exposure in this building based on the inspection and the sampling? So how do we do that? One of the many devices we use is called a laser particle counter. They're pretty pricey, and what they essentially do is they suck in an amount of air in every room that we go through in the school, and we measure the amount of particulate that's in the air. So that's sort of the first step. The second step is we know that remediation activities took place, and we want to verify that those remediation activities complied with the standard of care. And believe it or not, there is a standard of care when we're dealing with water damage and mold contamination in a building. It's called the S-500 and the S-520. These are peer-reviewed, industry-standard documents that get followed by both assessors and remediators here in New York. It's important to point out that there are no federal or state guidelines for mold exposure. There's no level where if you cross this threshold, it's dangerous. There's no amount that everybody agrees on. But what everybody can agree on is if we're in a school and we have readily visible mold growing on personal property, there's an issue that needs to be resolved. And our opinion is the following. We collected air samples throughout the building. We took site air samples using laser particle. We used a thermal hygrometer, which allows us to determine air quality as it relates to relative humidity, grains per pound, dew point, that sort of thing. And we also went through with a thermal imaging camera to verify what we sort of already knew, that there is not an ongoing leak or mechanical failure in the building that was leading to this abnormal condition. What was the condition? Well, it was frankly very high humidity and very high temperature coupled with lack of airflow and the inability of the mechanical systems that were in place to deal with this issue. What did the district do? They instituted an air quality program. They installed dehumidifiers and HEPA filters in all of the classrooms, and I was hard-pressed to find any mold anywhere in the school. I was very clean. One of the other things we do is we go through on surfaces that are going to be touched by students, based on the class level that we're in, and we take swabs. They're called ATP swabs. They use bio luminescence, which essentially allows me to swab a surface and onsite tell if there is a contamination hazard. We didn't find any of that in the school. We submitted all of these air samples to a nationally accredited laboratory in Manhattan called EMSL Analytical. They are the industry leader in analysis of microbial samples, both air samples and swabs. They sent us back a report, which we analyzed internally, and we also used the analysis threshold guidelines that the lab gives us. And what did that say? That said that there is no elevated concern in the school. After, in fact, the day after we conducted our assessment, the school was visited by PESH, and PESH came in and did their own assessment of the entire building. And they also were not able to find any readily visible mold. Our conclusion, based on the comprehensive inspection of the structure, is that as it stands today, there is not a mold problem or a contamination or exposure hazard in the building. We also conclude that the institution of an air quality program, which includes not only the use of dehumidifiers and HEPA filters, was effective, and that continued data logging of the temperature and relative humidity in these rooms, especially during the summer months, is really imperative to prevent a recurrence that happened. So that's the conclusion we came to. We find, based on the standards of care and to a reasonable degree of scientific certainty, that the school is clean, it's habitable, and there are no exposure hazards based on our sampling.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. You said hard-pressed to find any mold. Can you clarify what you meant by that?
Yes. So when we're conducting a visual assessment, we go into areas, first, we're looking at every corner, floor walls and ceiling. We're looking inside cabinets. We're opening everything up. We're not just walking into the room and saying, oh, no mold here. No, it takes a long time to be comprehensive about this. But the naked eye can't find and can't see mold in every situation. So one of the things we do in every single classroom and occupiable common space that we go into is we use an LED light. We place the LED light up against the surface that we're concerned about potentially having exposure, because mold spores are really thick, and when you have them growing on the wall, if it was a white spore growth that you have here, you would see that they cast a shadow. And that's one of the things that we did in every single room, was to look and see, is there any growth that is dangerous or visual at all? And during our inspection, both on the 17th and the 19th, based on the work that was conducted prior to our arrival, we weren't able to find anything wrong in the building.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Pretty comprehensive. Excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
And the reports will be posted on the website tomorrow. Thank you so much, John.
My pleasure.
And we don't have, poor Jenny from PESH is, normally her turnaround time for her reports is pretty, you know, not, not long, but the PESH investigation is they show up at your school and they do that investigation right there, right then. And she's getting called all over the place, so she's, she's a little behind.
You have a verbal?
Oh, we had her verbal. No mold.
Okay, thank you.
So on to 7.3, the Capital Project Update. Eli Garcia and CS Arch.
Okay. We have the CEO of CS Arch, Dan Woodside. We have our architect and our mechanical engineer, Zach. Tom and Zach.
Hi, everybody. I didn't wear the right green sweater, I'm sorry.
But you've got it, you've got, you've got the green.
It's got a green, gold, and lime. Jay, do you get to the presentation there, or do I?
If you, your, the right or left button, on the little skinny one? No.
Oh, the little skinny one. The right or left button.
Keep going.
Next up. We're up. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lou from our construction management firm is here as well, too, so.
Exciting night to be here. We're going to go through the schematic design phase of the project with you. As we understand, you should have received a copy we sent on Tuesday of the schematic design report, so hopefully everybody has had a chance to look at that in advance of this. So introductions, Dr. Rychek has already done that. We want to go through.
Just one second, please. It was just added today, so if you look in board docs, it should be there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Well, we're going to go through a lot of the information here, so we'll give you the high-level overview of it, and you can read it while you're trying to fall asleep. It'll put you right to sleep. Science room layouts, we'll go through. I'm going to have Tom come up and go through that, and then Zach's going to talk about the MEP reviews, where we stand with all three buildings on the MEP designs. Lou will talk about budget and where we are, schedule. I'll go back through schedule, and also some options we want to talk about related to State Education Department and North Park, some thoughts we've had around that, and certainly open it up for questions, and jump in anytime if you have questions along the way here. The project team, you know, many obviously you know from the district, just a couple of other people to point out, we've been meeting every two weeks as a project team, design team, construction management team, Bernie Donigan's office, Jason, who you know well, Jason Schwartz is normally on the phone. So when we're talking about where the scope is related to aid, all those things, we keep it on track with what was decided by this board and what was presented to the public. Myself, Tom, and Zach, Zach's our project manager as well. A couple other people, our lead electrical engineer, Mark Del Bovey. Michael Schwartz has been in these meetings. He's the engineering principal overseeing the entire department. And then project architect Steve Hollins, who you've met before, is still involved in the project development as well, in close, close work with Tom on the, on the architecture side. So I'm going to have Tom come up. He's going to go through the science layouts with you.
Oh, good evening. I get to talk about all the fun stuff. We've been doing a lot of work on the science layouts. It's always nice to begin a project and really, everyone starts off with a lot of just anticipation and expectation about what these rooms are going to be like, and making sure that we're doing our best efforts to put a lot of detail into making sure that they meet all the needs of both the science staff as well as the students that they'll serve. So we've been working, obviously, we had a big programming session to confirm a lot of the, a lot of the details of each of the specific science rooms in question. We brought the whole group together. They were great. They were excited. They were full of energy for the first hour, let's say. And then it wanes into the second hour, but they were a great bunch to work with. We went through each of the, each of the rooms respective, and really talked about all of the various information we needed to gather to help us to develop the design for each of the rooms.
And just to clarify, the group is the teachers and the administrators in charge of science?
In charge of science. So it was a, it was a very diverse group. We had, the IT folks were there as well, because there's a lot of moving pieces to these rooms. And we go through, as you might expect, everything from the very beginning to the end. How many students are going to be served in these rooms? Of course, what's the room discipline? What are the kind of supporting structures that we need to serve the various science discipline? Because remember, this is comprehensively all of the science rooms in the building that will be, that will be addressed with this, with this renovation. And then we start talking about the very specifics, the number of outlets in each room, the type of lighting, the type of wall surface, the ceiling treatments. Really goes from one end of the spectrum to the other, and this allowed us to really inform the design and make any final adjustments to really fix the plan and the schematic design so that we can see the scale, character, and scope of each. And of course, that then folds into working with Lou on the budget to make sure that we're keeping in alignment with what was originally presented. So I want to go through the overall plans as they stand now at the end of schematic design. I don't think you'll see too much that's arrived from the previous generations, but we have had subtle changes here and there based on the information we've gathered from the staff. So we're going to start with the pods. This is the lower level of the building, and I'll start with what we call the upper pod. It's the smaller of the two. And so as you can see, we still have the same arrangement as you had seen previously, where we've actually recreated the core of toileting facilities for both students, staff, and in the case of the upper pod, we also have a unisex toilet, or we call it a gender-neutral toilet as well, as well as janitor's closet for servicing this portion of the pod at the upper, at the lower level. You can see in orange, there's the athletics offices in the orange here, and then you can see a series of classrooms. Now, we did make one change to this classroom specifically, which the corridor used to go along the courtyard side of the classroom, and we actually shifted the corridor around that classroom, so that classroom now has natural light, has windows. And we felt that was a very beneficial thing to do, to serve that classroom and make sure all classrooms have natural light coming into them. One of the other things that we reminded everybody as we went through this process is that they're going to see a marked difference between the classrooms they have now and the classrooms that will be constructed as part of this renovation. And the first thing they'll notice is that the classrooms are far better proportioned than the current classrooms, and they're going to be much larger in size than the existing rooms. A lot of the existing rooms are under the state minimum standards. These are actually all over the minimum standards. So that's going to be a big difference. It's going to give the room certainly a much nicer feel. And I know it's a little bit hard to see in these diagrams, but along the corridors, we also have the lockers that are being recessed in the corridors, and that is throughout the floor plan for the students that are homeroom'd in these areas of the building. You can see when we moved that corridor and shifted it around the classroom, this block of white is actually the existing rampway that's there currently. There is a difference, there is a level difference between the existing, the original structure when the pods were constructed, there is a difference of, I want to say it's eight inches or so. And so that existing ramp, we're going to leave in place, which was actually a savings to our cost budget. Another good reason why we wanted to bring this, this corridor around the outside of that classroom. So you can also see in this diagram, we've now fully articulated the interchange between the two pods. Remember, there's a stairway there for proper egress, and so that is now articulated. It's a very nice feature. It also, again, tries to bring a lot of natural light into the corridor space, something that I think everyone in the existing pod arrangement, there's very little natural light that comes into those spaces, so we're really trying to infuse the natural light through the corridor systems and into the building wherever possible. On the lower of the pods, you can see, everything in green is the science. So on the lower pods, we have the biology room and the living environment rooms. So the biology room is in the corner. I'll show you that in a little bit. And then the other five are the living environment rooms. And of course, we've again retained the corridor, as you saw in the previous generations, comes right down the center now of the, of the pod. Very easy to supervise, very easy to traverse the building. Again, the end's in a stairwell that will exit the building. That stairwell's going to be a glass box. It's going to allow, again, a lot of natural light down there. It's gonna allow, again, a lot of natural light down that corridor and make this a much nicer space and an environment to be in. Again, on this side of the building, we do have a set of toilets. We have group toilet rooms for the students in this location. We have some drinking fountains there as well. And then we have a set of men's and women's toileting for staff, and again, another janitor's closet. And this little space in the middle is an IT room or an IDF room. We have one of those on each floor in each pod to provide for those functions, as well as provide redundancy in that regard. This little room in blue right here is a flexible space for use by students and/or staff, can accommodate, let's say, small group work, two to maybe four people at a time. It is glazed at the corridor, so you can see into it for supervision. Again, it gives you some ability to utilize the room in many different ways. As you can see, in this area, we've reserved a larger space off the corridor. Again, some flexibility with how this might get used, whether it be for display, whether it be for project work. It is part of the corridor system, but it's extremely large at that part of the corridor. I think this is about 14 foot across, so it allows you a lot of flexibility with how you might use that. And again, it's right next to that stairwell, and it has windows across from it, so a lot of natural light in that space as well.
Tom, I think it's also just important to touch on that we really try to respect the structure.
Yes. Yes. That's a very good point. You know, we're really working very hard, and that was one of the points early on that we made in working with Lou, that we didn't want to have to have a lot of impact to the existing structural system, because we know that has dollars and cents impacts. And so, I think everyone has been very good at working with us to try eliminate any of the conflicts with the existing structure. There are a couple, but they're in, I'll say, good locations where they pose no impact to the education in the rooms that they are within. And I'll show you a couple of those hopefully as we go along. And of course, on the other side here, these three classrooms you see, those are the former science rooms that are now being retrofitted back into classrooms. Again, you can see nice, large, regularized rooms that will be put to service back for classrooms. So if I do that, I'm getting the hang of this. So if we go to the upper level in the upper pod. So here, again, you see that we have the same core, the same core of student toileting, of the individual men's and women's toileting for staff, the unisex toilet, the janitor's closet. Again, here you see two physics rooms at the upper level. Again, classrooms. Here you see the infill of the classrooms from the former science program. And then on the lower, or the larger of the two pods, you can see we have a biology room, we have earth science, and then these two rooms, and I'll explain in more detail. You can see there's a little different configuration in these two rooms. These are the chemistry rooms, and we've been doing a lot of work on chemistry to really find a real exciting way to move that program forward and provide for how that space is utilized. And as early as yesterday, we had meetings with Kim and with Heather, Heather, to review some lab stations that have been utilized in another area chemistry program, and we went to look at them to see if that was something that they would consider, and they absolutely loved them. So I'll show you the, I'll show you that arrangement when we get to the large scale. Let's see. So here we start off with the biology room, and this will show you the location of the room. This is on the first floor. And you can see, very similar to each of the rooms, all the rooms are set up for 30 students at a max. Doesn't mean we have to have 30 students in that classroom, but we want to make sure that they can accommodate 30. Here you can see, so we have the two-person desks or two-person tables with chairs. They'll be at desk height. We have perimeter lab casework, and within that casework, we have five sink locations or five lab stations to serve those students in that room and in that program. Opposite of that, you can see we have the teaching wall, and of course, at the front of the room, we have the faculty demonstration unit with a desk unit. And so that's pretty much follows the arrangement or layout of most of the rooms. You'll see, as you can see in this diagram, we've tried to, wherever possible, put the casework back-to-back, again, for efficiency, in how we construct it, to be mindful of the investment that we're making. And you can see, this also starts to show the lockers along the corridor. You can begin to see the placement of those. So each of the science rooms also has a prep room. So in some cases, the prep rooms are shared, and in some cases, as in the case of biology, it is a prep room dedicated to the one room. Because we have banks of three classrooms, so two classrooms will share a prep room, and then the third will have its own prep room. So moving on, these are, this is a living environment room, and again, there are five of them, but they are all very similar. Again, you have the two-person tables with the student chairs. You have the perimeter lab casework with the five sink locations. You have the demonstration unit, and then you have the teaching wall on the opposite wall of the casework. And again, here you see we have an individualized prep room, and here you can also see the IT or the IDF room that I spoke about, and those are, of course, stacked in the swing of the building. Okay, this is the earth science, and of course, we have four earth science. They're on the upper level. And again, very common arrangement, so I won't have to belabor it much, but again, 30 students, the demonstration unit, the teaching wall, they all lay out very efficiently. They're very nicely scaled and nicely proportioned rooms. They're really definitely gonna see a difference, even when we went to Albertus Magnus yesterday, and I was talking with them about how this room is really, actually a little smaller than the room they're going into, and Kim went, "Really?" They're very large spaces. And then, of course, the associated prep room. And then that brings us to chemistry. So chemistry, the original suggestion was to have two large casework islands to serve as the lab units, and there was a lot of concern over how crowded those were gonna become with 15 students potentially around each of those lab stations. And in meeting with Kim and others, I think they recognized that that was potentially an issue. We presented some alternatives to address that, and this was one of the alternatives that they liked the most, which was to go to chemistry stations that are set up for five students each. There would be six in the room, so it would serve a total of 30. Each of these stations has a unit with a sink, so it can serve for the labs, and the tabletop is actually electric, and it raises and lowers. So it raises for the lab and it lowers for the desk height work. It's something that's controlled by the, it's not controlled by the students. It's an infrared remote, so all of them can raise and lower at the same time. They were concerned a little bit about what the quality level of these units were gonna be like, so we found a local school, Albertus Magnus down in New City, down in Clarkstown, that had them. We went and looked at those yesterday, and we were actually surprised at the level of quality of these units. And that installation was in for five years, and we saw very little to any wear and tear whatsoever on the units, the faculty. We spoke with their science teacher, and he was very enamored with them. We asked him if he would do the same thing over again, if he had to do it over again, and he said absolutely he would use these again. And the benefit is that the classroom, from a circulation standpoint, as you can see as it lays out, there's a lot of additional room around the perimeter, using, not having a separate classroom and separate lab stations in the same room. So this was a benefit. It took a lot more research, but I think one that's gonna bear a lot of fruit, and I think they're gonna be very, very excited when these are put in place. And again, it still has the demonstration unit at the front, still has the teaching wall. It has the casework. The casework will also include a section for book bags, so students will be able to come in, put their book bags in a cubby, and then go to this station, because we don't certainly want the book bags all over the floor, and there isn't a desk to leave them at like in a traditional room. So those things have already been discussed and evaluated, and they're very excited about that. Also with chemistry, this is one of the two rooms that share a very large chemistry prep room for all of the flammable and acid storage and the other things that will be within that. Each of the prep rooms will also have an ice maker, will also have an undercounter refrigerator, will obviously have a sink with drying racks.
The eye washes.
And yes, the rooms will have eye washes, the fire blankets, fire extinguishers, all of the safety equipment. All the rooms will have the goggle cabinets with the infrared, so that we're using the appropriate safe way to make sure that those are sanitized, and those will be within each of the rooms. And then physics. Physics, really nicely proportioned rooms, again, per rib inner stations. In this case, they only wanted four sinks around the perimeter, the demonstration unit at the head of the class with the teaching wall behind it, obviously the two-person desks and chairs for the students. And then again, between the two physics rooms, and this is in the upper pod, the shared prep room between the two rooms. You're hungry.
The tables are, you guys talk about that being oval also, so they can be refigured?
Yeah, so these two-person tables can be put in a lot of different configurations. They're gonna be desk height, of course, but they can be moved around. They're mobile, they're not fixed onto the floor. And in some of the rooms, the demonstration units are mobile as well. I think that's earth science and all of the ones at the middle school. The teacher demonstration units are mobile units. They're not fixed to the floor. And that was by request, and again, that allows them to move that off to the side and utilize the space in the room to a much greater emphasis. So speaking of the middle school, so of course, we're looking at a renovation of five of the rooms at the middle school. So the first three are shown here, and you can see, again, it's that traditional center classroom, perimeter lab station. Here, there was the request of only three sinks in each of the rooms. The sinks are on the corridor side to make it easier to facilitate all the piping runs. Again, we have the mobile demonstration unit, teaching wall. We're gonna have prep rooms in the upper end here in this location, which will serve all three of these rooms. Here, again, we're showing the different configurations you can make with the furniture that's in the room, so the rooms can be pushed to the side and make traditional kind of lab setups, or you can use the perimeter labs as they are against the wall, and all the tables can be in the center. Here we're showing groupings of two in a tight configuration, and here we're showing them, you know, spread out in rows. So there's a lot of flexibility with what you can do with the furniture in that regard. And then, of course, the final two rooms, very, very traditional setup. Again, enter the door, mobile demonstration unit with a teaching wall behind it, and then perimeter lab stations, and then the 30 student chairs. And again, these show individual, but they're gonna be two-person tables with chairs. Any questions? I know that's a lot to absorb in one.
I guess I have one question about the two rooms, these two rooms. Do you have to run new plumbing? There isn't plumbing in that entryway. And isn't everything like cement floors, the pipes are in the, you're gonna be digging up the floors and?
We'll be coring the floors to do the pipe runs. Yes, there is no water in that location. And yes, we have talked about trenching and digging into the floors to provide for that, for those locations. And that's one of the reasons why, especially in this location, we originally had perimeter sinks on the window wall as well as the corridor wall, and we talked about that, and we talked about it with the science staff, if we could simply concentrate that on the corridor wall to facilitate a lot less impact to the construction. And there was no issue with that whatsoever. They actually thought it was a much better approach, and so that is why you see now all the sinks moved to the corridor wall, where before you saw a couple on the window wall, and two or three around the corner on the corridor wall.
Good, thank you.
A couple, you know, only because you brought it up. You were talking about some of the equipment. Exhaust hoods, I assume, in chemistry labs as well as?
Yep, we can go back to that. So chemistry, you're correct. So we do, and I apologize, I forgot to point it out. We do have a fume hood in each of the chemistry rooms. We have one fume hood for each room. Here you can see the eye wash and shower. That will also have sump underneath it with a drain, so each of the showers will have a drain, so we're not cleaning up that mess every time it's activated.
How many of the classrooms are, are you anticipating putting gas in all or some?
Chemistry.
Just chemistry?
Just chemistry.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, biology and chemistry.
Okay, okay.
You're right. Thanks, Zach.
And you talked about the furniture. Interesting, the idea that it raises and lowers, and so the concept is that it raises, it's then at a standing height, lowers for a typical desk height?
For the typical classroom structure.
And those are in chemistry rooms, correct?
Correct.
Are you, so I'm assuming you're doing epoxy countertops?
It's, so you're correct. So the tables that we looked at, it's still a one-inch-thick chem resin top. It's got a lip at the edge to prevent-
The marine edge?
To prevent, yeah, to prevent spills. It raises and lowers in under 10 seconds. I thought it was more like five to eight seconds. And because we talked about, when would that be done? It would be done in between the classes, so that the students wouldn't be in the room at the time that it was being raised and lowered. It's a singular remote that runs an infrared to all the tables at once, or you can do individual tables if you get right up to the infrared sensor. You can do one table at a time. Their, the base of the unit is, I wanna say, about eighth-inch-thick metal sheets. It's very, very sturdy. Obviously, there's a lot of color options. It does have electrical in it, very, very deep sink. They loved the sink. And the sink also is so large that the front edge of it has a shelf on it that's halfway up, and they really liked the idea of the shelf and then the deep sink beyond, but quite large as well. I had photographs that we took yesterday. We didn't have time to upload them in time for the presentation. I apologize, but we will get those sent around, so anyone wants to look at it.
They also have dividers?
Yeah.
That you can divide, foot up between each student-
For testing.
-for testing going on. And they just, they bring them out and attach those to the table temporarily and take them away.
Okay.
And we would have a cubby for those, for the storage.
And I noticed that there's five students per workstation. Teacher is comfortable with that? I know that a lot of the chemistry labs that I know work in either groups of two or three.
Well, it's up to five, so that would mean 30 in the room. Most cases, especially in chemistry, you're not running 30.
That's a lot of kids to have.
That's a lot of kids. So, but these are the larger, so the layout we showed and the tables we saw are the larger. They actually had as many as six around each of their tables, which was still okay. Five was certainly a lot more comfortable, and typically you'd probably only be running four at a table, and with four-
Four would give you 24.
Is very generous from a space standpoint. The tables across are 72 inches, so it's a lot of space.
And I assume you've done some type of a matrix to compare existing student count, desk space, new layout versus existing layout, so that we've got all capacity? I'm just looking to say that, okay, if we could handle X number of chemistry classes, students in the old layout, we'd-
It is, and in most cases, it's because these rooms are so much larger than what you currently have, it's actually improved. So you're gonna see on a per-station basis, you're gonna have more space available per student. Not typical that we see labs at 30 per room, but that's the cap on your contract, so we wanted to make sure that our stage, each of the labs could accommodate 30 at the max.
Okay. Have we lost general education rooms? So in, I mean, we haven't gained square footage.
Right.
So if we've added more classrooms-
It's a very good question.
More science rooms, have we lost general ed?
And the answer is yes. We did an analysis early on, and we reviewed it with the high school administrators, that we knew that we were gonna lose a certain number of classrooms, because these new rooms, including the classrooms, are gonna be at or above the standard. So, you know, you're gonna go from having two or three rooms that might have been at 650, and you're gonna end up with two rooms at, you know, 830 or 840. And I think we did early on, I can go back and check my notes early on, we ended up with losing a net three or four classrooms, general classrooms in that. with losing a net three or four classrooms, general classrooms, in that, in that exchange, but they felt that that was something that was not going to pose an impact to their scheduling of the rooms.
I mean, it's great to make all the science teachers happy, but not necessarily at the...
Yes. And you're netting, I think, one additional science classroom in this exchange as well.
Yeah, we studied in depth in pre-ref, and I remember the conversations for making sure that.
If you go back to look at the early presentations of the different options.
I remember seeing it.
We had the tally, we had the tally existing and tally new, and it showed you the room-by-room comparison, and we talked a lot about that early on, that when we fixed on the option that we were pursuing, that that was not going to pose an impact in the loss. And I think we moved some things around to make up one or two of those that we potentially were going to lose originally so that it was a workable solution. So, and it's been reviewed since then, of course.
And I'll finish up. Any discussion about the, what happens down the road when all of a sudden we need another chemistry classroom, or we need, you know, another bio or another earth science? The flexibility within the rooms, you know, making sure that we've got the flexibility so that a room that maybe, you know, we thought was going to be in earth science now, how do we upgrade that to a chemistry lab, for instance?
Yeah, I actually think that with eight periods a day, we're not utilizing the chemistry, you know, I think we could have, we could increase enrollment and still be able to accommodate more students through scheduling. Certainly, the classrooms you'd be concerned about are specifically bio and chem.
Right.
But we were very confident that, you know, there was room to grow through scheduling.
That's all I want to do, is just make sure that we've looked at that and said that this is not only fits today, but fits the future.
Right. So, again, we're gaining one science classroom, and it's not that long ago where the high school had a significantly larger population and we were able to accommodate. So, even if we went back up to our highest enrollment, when the pods were built, if you will, because that was what prompted the pods to be built in the first place, we'd be able to accommodate through scheduling.
And now, you're talking much larger rooms in addition to one additional room. Good.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Anything, any other questions?
It's exciting.
It's very exciting.
I wish we had the pictures of how the science labs look right now, so as we're talking about this.
Kim and Heather were very excited yesterday.
Yeah.
Hey, Zach, you got five minutes to go through your hearing review.
I think we can do it. Not quite as glamorous, but still important.
Very colorful.
Yeah, very colorful. So, I'm going to keep this very high level. It hasn't changed much from the pre-ref. We'll start with the pods because that's continuing down, over Thomas going. All the science rooms are going to be fed by rooftop-mounted air handlers. One air handler is going to feed two rooms. There's 14 total science rooms, so we'll have seven air handlers on the roof. The new classrooms in the pods will be fed by unit ventilators consistent with the rest of the building, as you can see here in the blue. The bathroom cores and the corridors in the new pod space will be fed by rooftop-mounted energy recovery units for ventilation. Moving on into the existing portion of the building, the central classroom area here will be a unit ventilator replacement with the addition of relief and exhaust fans on the roof in the two-story building with first and second floor. The front offices will have rooftop-mounted energy recovery ventilator for ventilating the offices, and then a VRF system for heating and cooling, which is variable refrigerant flow, duct splits essentially. The auditorium, we're going to replace the existing air handler in the mezzanine above with a new custom-built-up air handler in the same space and reuse the ductwork. In the music and tech areas, we're going to replace the ceiling-mounted air handling units with new units and add ductwork as necessary. To fit those spaces out, the media center will have two roof-mounted air handling units for heating and ventilating. The cafeterias will have a unit ventilator replacement, that's what they have there now, that's what we're going to go back with. And then, the gym, we will also replace the ceiling-mounted air handlers, six in kind, and transfer that air to the locker rooms for ventilation and use roof-mounted air handlers for the locker rooms for heating and cooling. Any questions?
That's the whole building.
Yeah. Oh, I would like to mention that a big part of this project that's not shown here is that we are converting all of the boilers at all three schools from steam to hot water. So, to accompany this work, we'll have hot water boilers and new hydronic distribution piping throughout the entire building.
Mechanical cooling? Are you addressing mechanical cooling in this project?
Not at this time. However, we are going to provide every unit shown on this except for the areas in the purple, which are the cabinet heaters, with heating coils sized for cooling and drain pans in the equipment. So, if, as part of a future project or future work, we add a chiller, we can use the hydronic piping that we install as part of this project to accommodate cooling in all of the spaces.
So, you would anticipate having just a two-pipe system?
Yeah.
Okay. Which means that the building is either all in heating or all in cooling, but not?
Yes.
Nothing in between? Okay. Do you find that works in most of your schools?
I agree, I agree. I feel like you're in the wrong side.
Yeah, I do. I mean, most of the schools that we do it don't have any cooling, so, you know, the ability to switch over at a certain rate, I think, is advantageous.
But, yeah, I realize that most schools don't have cooling, but it's gaining momentum. There's much more cooling being added to schools. I'm a little concerned about setting it up so that you only have one option. Particularly, I think we would want to look at some areas that may have a potential of having, you know, either a cooling load or the need for heating or the need for cooling when the balance of the building may be operating in a different mode.
It's really good future planning. We're trying to really just also stick with what was decided on, what we budgeted for enough to make sure we're sympathetic to that. But, you know, I certainly hear what you're saying in terms of future planning.
Might make a good alternate.
It could make a good alternate, right. We can still have time, but that was the special.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, we're going to need more mechanical cooling in all of our buildings. Yeah. Okay.
To the middle school, we are only doing mechanical upgrades in the original portion of this building, so not quite as much as the high school. The areas in blue, the classrooms, will be, again, unit ventilator replacements in kind with active exhaust and relief on the roof. The area in yellow here will be two blower coils located in the attic, one to feed the music rooms and one to feed the stage. This red portion will be an air handler replacement. The current air handler is above the music classrooms, and now, we're going to move it out here and backfeed the existing ductwork. Same thing at the gym. The existing air handler is located in this area, and we're going to relocate it out into the open attic space and backfeed the ductwork for the gym. And the second floor has the same thing as here with the unit ventilator replacements. Again, with boiler conversions and new hydronic loops in the basement.
When you get a chance to go through the SD report, you see a lot of narrative information. You can read a lot about these types of systems if you're interested in converting more.
Yeah. All right. Onto the big one, North Park. So, as part of the North Park pre-ref, it was suggested that we replace the unit ventilators and add a chiller with a four-pipe system to address the humidity issues in the building. Through our design and SD and what we found in the building, in the layout of the building, we feel that there's a better system to address the humidity issues. What we'd like to do is essentially put a dedicated outside air system through the use of an energy recovery unit on each of the three wings that serves as the supply for the ventilation for all of the classrooms. We feel that decoupling the dehumidification from the heating and cooling will allow us to better address the air quality through use of fine-tuning of the dehumidification and filtration in those units. And then, for the individual zone control, for the heating season, we're going to have perimeter fin tube in all of the classrooms with individual thermostats in each room. And then, we wanted to address the possibility of future cooling, which we could do by adding a VRF system for each of the wings, essentially having one unit in each room. To further that, we did an analysis based on 500 CFM ventilation air per classroom from the DOAS system, and we found that if we look at a design day, which according to ASHRAE is in this area 85.6 degrees 98% of the time or less, that if we supply 50-degree air to the classrooms through the ventilation system, we can maintain a 78-degree dry bulb temperature and also a 45% relative humidity.
So, that's just a large advancement that we made during the schematic design process, recognizing with your team internally as well. So, that is what the estimate that you see tonight reflects as well, and I think major improvement over what we were discussing in pre-ref. So, that's part of the natural evolution as you go through final designs, schematic design. So, it's, so we're presenting that to you tonight. Any questions on any of that?
Okay. Good? Yep.
Lou's up?
Oh, what I did, what I did.
Now you did it.
Dan, I did it.
Don't be scared. There we go. What was that last one? You have to talk that?
Ah, this is just the North Park showing the wings, the maroon colors, the DOAS systems. The blue is a DOAS system with VRF for cooling for the offices, and the center is a DOAS system for ventilation and heating and cooling through the use of blower coils and the existing mezzanine.
Any questions? Okay.
My question is. That's like the playground color, is that the violet color?
Yes, it is close.
So, what we did was use the same format that was used during the referendum to summarize where we were with each one of the schools as far as budgeting of the work. Like Dan said, we've been having a lot of meetings to really fine-tune the scope during the SD process, and that's where we really tried to figure out, did I include everything that was really needed, or did I overestimate items? And so, there's a back and forth, and really, a lot of work was done in the pod area, and there was some movement there, back and forth. So, I feel pretty good about where we are with that. Went through the mechanicals at the other buildings, and the one that really changed a bit was North Park, primarily for two reasons. One was we went with the DOAS system, and number two, I, as a team, we decided we should add $150,000 to that number for an upgrade of the front end of, to support the mechanical equipment. So, those are the big changes when you really look at, look at the top of the line. And you'll notice that the design contingency, as normally it does, has moved down. We originally were holding 5%. As we start going through the different phases of design, right now, we're at SD, the next phase is going to be design development. We'll continue to work on all of the design elements across all the buildings, and you're going to continue to see that we're going to start using that, using that up. And that'll be, become eventually zero by the time we're at the CD stage, which is the construction document stage. We are still projecting, when we look at this, we're still projecting to bidding in the fall/winter of 2019. So, if there's anything that does happen to go out to bid before that, that just only helps us, but right now, that's what we're still projecting. The lockers, we're showing that the lockers are still going to be part of the project, but they are going to be purchased out of a different fund. And then, alternates that were being considered are a VRF system at North Park. And I don't know if you, you guys wanted to talk a little bit more about what that entailed or not?
Well, that gives you the opportunity to cool in the future.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the VRF would be added, we're looking at an alternate.
Yeah, just to be clear, that would basically, we would take that design day of the 2%, 98% of the year, and the set point of 78, we would bump it up to kind of a worst-case scenario and set the indoor air temperature to 72. So, that would be the delta that we would pick up with the additional VRF system.
So, we're, you know, we're all feeling we're still in a good position on the budget side. Any questions on the budget? Oh, and I just want to mention too, on the incidental side, we've had quite a few meetings to make sure the incidental side was really fine-tuned, and we have that structured pretty well. Right now, we're just looking for final comments back from Bernigan's office on the financing side, make sure we have money in there for that.
Included in your incidental, you've got all the desk furniture, movable furniture?
That is correct. We have furniture, loose furniture is in the incidental budget. And right now, we are holding an independent commissioning number. On a project of this scale, there's so much mechanical work, the team felt that holding a separate number for an independent commissioning company is going to be of value on this project.
And that's coming, you've got that in the incidental?
That's covered under incidental.
Yeah, professional service, okay.
So, in, thanks, Lou. In projects, there's typically contractor commissioning that's done as part of the contract documents written into the specifications. We've found over the years, it's just not enough. And as these projects become more and more complex and systems become more and more complex, it's money well-spent to do full commissioning on a project from an outside commissioning agent. So, that's what we're recommending, and it does fit within the overall incidental cost right now. So, we are budgeting for that. Yep, Tom?
Just to clarify, Perry, because I don't want to make anybody be confused.
So, when we talk about the loose furnishings, Perry?
Yep.
That's going to be the chairs for the science rooms?
Right.
But all of the desks for the classrooms, you already have a sufficient amount of furnishings, and Elliot has been purchasing new classroom furniture over time for your existing classrooms. And again, we're going to end up with fewer of those rooms, so you have sufficient furniture for the classrooms we're putting back in place. So, we're not planning on purchasing.
So, we're reusing existing furniture in most of the classrooms?
Yes. In fact, he's, I think Elliot had said he's going to cycle some of the older stuff out, and he's been replacing it with newer. But then, the loose furniture and equipment is just truly equipment that's required for the science program, and those chairs, and obviously the tables and such, for the science rooms. I didn't want everybody to think that we might be purchasing.
Good clarification. I was envisioning we were going to have all new.
No, we've been replacing a lot of the furniture, getting rid of all those old desks where the chairs are stuck to them, and more teachers want table-type arrangements versus individual desks.
Okay, other questions there?
One other question. If we're successful in moving up the portion of the capital project for North Park, getting it done like we saw, we heard, which Senator Serena has already put in request to Department of Education and SED to fast-track, as it were, the plans and stuff, so we might get it done a year. really on the overall financing for the project, right, Linda? You're still talking about the same dollar amount borrowing slightly earlier for North Park, but no, it shouldn't have an impact on that. And I guess Lou could speak to the construction side of it, but I don't think it would have an impact.
And that entire, that building can be done in one summer?
It wouldn't be done over summer. What we do is, what's great about, sorry.
What's great about the design that we're considering right now, that's actually estimated for, is that we can actually put that system in place in parallel, keep your existing univentilators in place, the DOAS system, everything else is actually in the ceilings on the roof. So the existing heating system would be removed when we were done with the new system. So we can essentially work second shift. It's not something that would all be done over a summer. It's, you know, it's $2.5 million worth of work that just wouldn't happen in two months. But we can schedule it, and what's great about it, again, it's a parallel, it's a parallel independent system. So the old one can stay in play until the new one's installed.
Would you have to rip out the tile ceiling as you're doing this?
Yes.
So the tile ceilings will be open?
Yeah, and that's a great question. What's going to happen is, in the classrooms where we're putting back the DOAS system, it's going to be exposed ductwork. So that's going to be part of the design as well. But yes, the ceilings have to come down in the corridors and in the ceilings in the classrooms to get all of the ductwork in, because everything is coming down from the roof. And there's a significant amount of ductwork that's coming in, especially with the DOAS, you're bringing in another, it's a parallel set of fresh air. It's more fresh air that you're bringing into the room.
But that's not something you can do while classes are going on during the week?
No, no. It'd be second shift, you know, just, it's one of those things, from the top, you can do layout. We can get trunks in, and over the summer, all the ceilings come out. The classrooms is where we are looking to have exposed ductwork, so that would happen over the summer. We can tie down, and then that would happen over the summer.
So just so I can visualize properly, so what you're saying is we're going to have exposed ductwork within the classrooms. The classrooms, I assume, now have all dropped acoustical ceilings like this or no? What are the ceiling conditions now in that building?
It's a splay.
Oh, it's a splay, okay. Okay.
It's just tight, it's tight to the ceiling.
Okay.
The last project, we did ceiling replacements in the corridors.
Okay.
You know, so we're going to.
And that's what you would propose here as well?
Correct.
So when complete, we'd have acoustical ceiling back in the hallway?
That's right.
And the existing ceiling in the classrooms just now with the exposed ductwork?
It's exposed ductwork, right, tight to the ceiling.
Okay.
That's correct.
So this, this schedule that you see in front of you, again, we're here tonight to present the schematic design and schematic design report, looking for your general approval to move forward. We've really already continued moving forward into design development because we need to to meet schedule, but really to share the budget with you, and it's great news that we're on schedule and we're on budget. So design development is the next phase of our work. We would be back hopefully to you around November 30th for an update in design development and an update with our budget as well, just another snapshot of where we are budget-wise. I think that's where we get into even more detail in terms of estimating. We're still targeting an SED submission by January 10th of 2019 for all buildings. And then in the case of FDR and of Haveland, we would be looking to bid those projects November, about mid-November. And the reason is, it's still, unless you go to a third-party review, we're looking at a 40-week review period for the engineers at State Ed to approve the project. You do have the option to go to a third-party review. Perry has mentioned in a previous meeting that, and I believe that's how you're going, and well, that is how you're going in your home district of Red Hook. I did talk to the person at State Ed that actually manages that process right now, and there are no projects in the queue for third-party review. They're all caught up, but you pay a fee for that. So as the time comes, if that's something we feel we should do for this project, then you can look at the cost of that. We are recommending, because there's going to be so much construction going on in this district, that you probably don't want to do that. You probably still want to phase and stage this project over time, obviously knowing that North Park is the most critical piece of this. So given a bid set of November 14th of 2019, we'd be looking to award contracts at a great time of year in January of 2020, and construction would be certainly a full two summers, two years from that point. You'd be looking to close out by 2022, which is the information we have shared previously. The exception to that is North Park. And what we would like to do, and we've already started this process, your superintendent has started this process, I believe Elliot started this process, we have, and it's with the attention with the issues at North Park, we would like to make an appeal to State Ed to expedite the review of just that project. Now, we're not sure yet, but it's likely, even though everybody in this room and everybody in your school community realizes this is an emergency, technically State Ed will not clarify or declare this as an emergency, because they've got very strict rules for how to do that. But given that, we still feel, again, with a heightened attention to this and the concern, that we can appeal to them for an expedited review. What that means is that we would look to get a review within two months, 10 weeks. Would again, put you out at a good time in 2019 to bid in the spring of 2019 and do the construction, as Lou had just described to you, in 2019 throughout the year. If that, for some reason, is not accepted by State Ed, we could still go to a third-party review, again, just for North Park. There will be an associated cost to the project as well, and you're looking right now at approximately two to three months to make that happen. So we think we can pick up time with an expedited review, but it does take an appeal to State Ed to make that happen.
How much time do you need to consider the VRF system to North Park? When would we have to let you know on that?
Well, that would be a bid alternate, so we would be looking to, once we bid that project, if we continue to set that up as an alternate, when the bid results come in, we would take a look at whether we were on budget for the North Park school, and if we're under budget and can accept that alternate, then it'd be a decision of the board at that time to accept that alternate.
Okay.
Now, what we won't have at that time are the bid results for the rest of the project. So you won't see the whole thing, the whole project in its entirety related to your entire budget. So we'll have some thinking to do at that point, how to proceed.
Okay.
And I think that is it.
So are you expecting, so if we had to go to a third-party review for North Park, are you thinking that that would put us in a construction cycle for summer of 2019?
For the entire project?
For the North Park.
Yes, I think you would still meet a construction season of 2019 for a third-party review for North Park, but we're trying to get you to not have to pay for that, third-party review.
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
But the other side of it is, if you miss that cycle, you essentially have a one-year lag. If you're not ready to bid, if you can't bid and award in time for that cycle, that means you've got another full year.
Correct.
That you're going without getting the improvement started.
Which is, right, which is the schedule for the rest of the project anyway, but we're trying to move it up one calendar year.
But you're looking at a, what is it, $3 million? I can go back to the numbers. For North Park?
Right.
A $3 million project, the review cost for a $3 million project is, what, $10,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But the other thing to consider, maybe Lou could talk to this, we would be bidding in April.
Mm-hmm. It's tight.
That's, you're on the edge of whether you're going to get really good competitive bids being so close to the summer. And by the time you, you know, got through the contracting and the shop run process, you know, we're really pushing the summer. I do, it's tight.
Yep. Plus lead times on equipment and.
Getting an expedited review from SED would be extremely advantageous, because then you could bid in February, but you would want to have a predict.
Right. Any other questions? Sorry, we took longer than we probably should have, but.
This is important stuff.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And safe, oh, you might say for a few minutes.
At this time, can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, is there anybody who would like to address the board? Please go to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Mary Ann Mullin, and I teach at FDR High School. This summer, I attended the Avid Summer Conference in Philadelphia, July 2018, and I submitted receipts for travel expenses and meals. Reimbursement for one meal was denied. Initially, Peter Calgris, I hope I'm saying that name right, said this was because the receipt was not itemized. I questioned this assessment since the item ordered and the cost are both indicated on the receipt, seemed itemized to me. Upon review, Linda Steinberg agreed with the denial, stating that the guest checks provided are not receipts and are not sufficient for reimbursement because the restaurant name is not pre-printed on the form. So this is the receipt, it is a typical guest check. Anybody who's been to a diner, a piece of place, has seen something like that used. The language of the Board of Ed policy 6830 requires an original receipt or other expense documentation. The policy does not disqualify guest check receipts specifically. It is a commonly used form of restaurant receipt. Even if this guest check is interpreted by the business office to not qualify as a receipt, it should still meet the policy criteria of expense documentation. Board of Ed policy 6830 does not indicate any particular information need be pre-printed on a receipt or expense documentation. I did, however, attach a business card with the name and address and phone number of the restaurant. So that I stapled to it when I turned it in. I just also wanted to point out that employees who may have dietary restrictions, who needed to eat in establishments that only offered this type of commonly used receipt as documentation, would have no reimbursement for any of their meals. The meal expense I incurred with a colleague that I attended Avid with was reasonable and was itemized. It was at a local restaurant, we walked there from the conference. I understand and appreciate that there needs to be auditing procedures and policies outlining allowable spending, but the denial of this reimbursement lacks common sense and does not seem to be in keeping with the language of the Board of Ed policy. This is the second time I have experienced a problem being reimbursed for a meal expense at a conference, and sadly, I've heard countless other similar stories from colleagues who have experienced being denied reimbursement for legitimate expenses. This unfortunate interpretation and overreach will have the unintended consequence of discouraging teacher participation at Avid and other conferences for fear they may not be reimbursed for reasonable and qualifying expenses. So I would ask the board to review the decision made in this particular case and perhaps review the policy and the manner in which it is interpreted. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
I just have two questions, one in regards to the capital improvement projects. Is the part for North Park, is that going to include any of the recommendations that the hydrogeologist from 2013 made regarding the tunnels underneath of the school for ventilation and the moisture issues there? Also, moving forward to the 2019 summer, is there any talk or plans of doing things differently so that we don't encounter the same fungal growth in the school? Has that been discussed? Is there going to be a discussion of that? And my third question is, can I just have clarification about the letter from Senator Sue Serena, where she was referencing the issues at North Park being for five years? Because as of the mold reports that I had received from the district, they are from 2013 and include proliferated mold growth. So can we just have some clarification about that, like what the standing was at that time, what was done, was it not as bad as it is now, and how it got better from then to now? Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
I just have a suggestion. I don't know if this is.
Can I have your name, please?
This, Juliana Moore, Statsburg. Did I do that correctly? I love the talking back and forth with the capital project engineers, and it helps with everybody understanding what's going on, but the public have to ask questions and then get answers later, and half the time, nobody remembers what the question is. Is that even possible? No? Okay. So I would like to know why the reports haven't been released. They're supposed to be, from what I've heard, released tomorrow, which the board meeting is today. There were visual and air samples, which is great, things are sounding great. Why haven't there been surface samples? It may be that contraption you guys use. Do a surface sample? I don't know. They talked about everything being touched by a student has been tested. Is that really realistic? I really want to know the chemicals that were used and how they were properly used, because the MSDS sheets say they are hazardous. And with the Sue Serena letter, it was also in two different colors. I don't really understand that, doesn't make much sense. And we're blaming North Park on the HVAC system of the capital project, but then we're blaming it on moisture in the air. I don't really understand the difference. Is it the capital project, or is it the HVAC, or is it just the building itself? Mr. Sheldon brought up a very good point. My daughter isn't further into Hyde Park yet, but climate control is obviously a big issue, and if the capital project may be looking forward, much forward, because these are very expensive projects, maybe the hot-cold system you were speaking of is kind of important for the other schools. That's it for now. Thank you.
Is there any other people who'd like to address the board?
Concerning the capital project, I'm enthusiastic about that. I think that it looks like a lot of the detail has been thoroughly covered. I like the questions and answers that have been. I like the questions and answers that have been given here tonight. And I think the community should really be enthusiastic about the impact this is going to have on our schools. So I can't wait to see that move forward. One question that I had regarding the science labs, and that is, what's being done to accommodate extensive maintenance? For example, replacing faucets, sinks, gas and electric supplies, exhaust hoods, and safety showers. One of the things that I've seen in older buildings is that the labs become inoperative or unusable simply because the faucets don't work, the sinks leak, the gas supply is no longer there. So I'm hoping that we can extend the life of these labs by accommodating that kind of maintenance. Concerning the mold, I find the mold assessor's statement and supporting data reports that are currently on the web under Board Docs to be compelling evidence that there's no longer a problem. I appreciate that the board and the administration went out of their way to get an outside authority to investigate that and make that statement. And I'm curious about what's the plan going forward, both short and long term, to make sure that we don't see this kind of issue again? And have there been any confirmed health impacts linked to the current problem? And finally, I'm curious about the new Director of Equity and Human Resources position. I had trouble finding any information about that from past meetings or documentation. So if you could give us a summary of his job responsibilities, I think that would be useful. I also wanted to applaud the appointment of Elliot to that position. I've worked with Elliot several times on several different projects, and I think that he's well-suited and will do well there. Although, I have to admit that I'm concerned because I think it's going to be difficult to find somebody to fill his shoes.
My name is Jillian Perry. I just have one really quick question regarding the ceiling tiles and the fixtures that are going to be stuck on, the ventilation system. Are the tiles asbestos tiles? I don't know anything about ceiling tiles. And will there be any disturbances in regards to affixing this duct system to the ceiling?
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, at this time, public participation is closed. There is no longer a need to vote. Close public participation. So... For Mary Ann, the board will take yours under consideration, and we'll have to get back with you on that. Should Elliot, if she asks about the ventilation tunnel?
Yeah, I missed the first part of the tunnels, but come on up Elliot. And just while he's coming up, we have had the tunnels inspected recently. But I missed the first part of the question, so I hope you caught the first part of the question.
So there was a question about the recommendations from the 2013 hydrogeologist's assessment of the tunnel system, which I did review briefly before walking up here, just to make sure I understood and would speak correctly. One of the... Well, he speaks to a couple of possible sources of the moisture infiltration. At that point in time, just to remind those that were not, or that may have not been around or part of that discussion, we weren't really sure at that point where the moisture and the humidity was coming from. And bringing in the hydrogeologist was the first step in that exploration process as somebody who's an expert in groundwater penetration specifically. Understanding the extent of the wetlands which North Park is situated on, the hypothesis at the time was that the groundwater was penetrating through the slab and through the tunnel system. And so that was what Mr. Rubin's assessment was based on. He did have some recommendations for creating porous surfaces, traps, and ventilation plans in the future, should that be further identified as part of the problem. One of the things that we did do that was part of his recommendation was add fans to circulate the air in the tunnel system so that we would not let any moist air sit stagnant in that space. So that was done rather promptly after his investigation at the time. There was another question about...
Well, there was the 2013. What was clarification about what's been done since 2013?
What did we do in 2013 to remedy?
There was visible mold spotted. It was identified, it was brought to the principal's attention at the time, Lisa Hekt, which brought us into the conversation. It was cleaned, and we had testing done after the fact, and it was deemed adequate at the time. So that did prompt a number of things. And we've released documentation showing that since purchase, dehumidifiers, and really started to build the practices we have in place today based on that event and going forward. I mean, it was upwards of three tests in one school year subsequent to that, just to keep an eye on the situation.
If I remember correctly, it was something about vents being sealed shut and things like that that were worked on?
That was a part of the fresh air problem in that building. Roughly 80% of the fresh air dampers on the unit ventilators that service the classroom spaces had been physically sealed or forced shut. Either that or the actuators that control them was malfunctioned. Part of our controls project that was done last school year was to modify how we activate the unit ventilators, which includes the steam valves that energize the coils, the actuators for the dampers themselves, and the motor controls. So in putting the new control system in, we were retrocommissioning that equipment back to its original design purpose, and we did bring those systems back online.
And Senator Serino crafted, she never contacted us for information. She kind of crafted her letter after what she was reading in the newspaper. So it mirrors some of the misconceptions that were out there. The other question about the plan for moving forward. Elliot's drafting it. He was waiting for John Evans' report today before he put the finishing touches on it so that we have a plan moving forward from now until the full completion of the construction. And we should have that either tomorrow or early next week. The question about why the most recent report wasn't posted. Again, with John and everybody else working in every school district in the area, the report was just delivered to us today. He knew his deadline was today, right before the board meeting. So it arrived probably at about 5:30. We got it on the board agenda. We'll post it on the website. But as of right now, it is on the...
It's in Board Docs.
It's in Board Docs, so it's available to the public if you go on our website for our board meeting. We'll put it on the website tomorrow.
I'd like to comment too, to go to your question. We haven't been dealing with a mold issue since all this time. It's a moisture issue. I understand. But it's not a constant. It's about semantics. All I'm trying to say is, it hasn't been constant. We've been dealing with a moisture issue that sometimes...
You know, I'm going to, it's not a... Well, I'll let Jeff do this. Yeah. So when we get to that question, I am going to ask John Evans to come up and talk about the difference between visible mold growth, which is when you have a problem, and air quality testing. And as we've been reiterating every stage, that there is mold in the air everywhere at all times. And when we do air quality testing, it will show you how much. But I'll, I don't know if John's going to say more than that, but if you walk into a hospital, if you walk into this building, if you walk into outside or inside, there are mold spores in the air everywhere. It's ubiquitous. The air quality testing helps us find out when things are spiking. The mold growth is where you need to do serious remediation. But I'll hold that for John because I'm hoping the expert can answer this question. So I don't know. Do we want to do that one now, or did you...
Do we have any more questions for Elliot? Elliot, there was a question on the chemicals used for cleaning. Can you restate those again?
Yes, we use, well, we have our chemicals in-house, and we also had two chemicals brought in by the contract cleaning service, LCS. We did go through this with the passion specter as well. I will read you one line from the SDS sheet. "The chemicals are listed in their concentrated state as corrosive and with a Category 4 level of oral toxicity. However, in their diluted products, this product, when diluted, as stated on the label, is not classified as hazardous according to OSHA 29CF or 1910.1200." So again, we use automatic dilution stations in our buildings so that our custodial workers are not handling concentrated chemical. When we brought LCS in, they brought their own dilution stations and had them mixed to a preset amount as part of their process as well. So there was no significant concentrated chemical exposure to our staff. And we did not handle the chemicals, those chemicals, with anyone else in the building but a skeleton custodial crew and the contractors.
And just to clarify, these chemicals are essentially soaps, correct?
Yeah, they're different levels of disinfectant than soaps.
It's not acids. We're bringing with it...
No, we're legally not allowed to use heavy biocides of any sort. And every chemical we use is classified as a quote-unquote "green" chemical.
And if we could ask John to talk about air quality sampling versus visible mold growth. And again, this is why we have hired as a second opinion an industrial hygienist who's an expert in the field.
Thank you very much. The guideline that we follow as it relates to mold contamination, as I stated during my opening remarks, is the IICRC S520. This is a collegiate-level text. It's hundreds of pages long, and it gives a guideline for both the assessment and remediation. This is one of the documents that we follow when we're conducting assessment and conducting sampling. The assembled group should know that in New York State, as a licensed mold assessor, I am not required, and in fact, I'm not directed, to collect samples of any type as a requirement of my assessment. However, it, like any other assessment tool, is just one of the many things that we use. A, it's visual. B, if we don't see anything visual that is a mark that is bothersome to us, then we use the adenosine triphosphate, the ATP swabs. And they're actually pretty cool. We used a lot of them in the school. We did not touch every single surface in the school. This would have been cost prohibitive and doesn't make good scientific sense. But how does it actually work? Each one of the swabs is hygienically sealed in a plastic test tube, and we swab a surface, usually about two to four square inches. And inside this little ampule is adenosine triphosphate, ATP. It's essentially the same thing in the rear end of a firefly, okay? You crack the ampule, and down the center of the Q-tip, the liquid goes, and it mixes with the Q-tip, the cotton. And you put it in this cool little box called a luminometer. And this box is able to tell us whether the surface that we've tested has any active organic contamination, whether it's bacteria or mold. Now, when your janitorial contractor, LCS, is using a disinfectant that complies with the New York State Green rules as it relates to chemical usages in a K through 12 building, they're also required to use a chemical concentration that is going to be able to isolate and remediate any readily visible growth, which is why the chemicals that were used, were used. Now, when we go through and actually test throughout the school, we are going based on the manufacturer's guidelines of the device, okay? And every single test that we conducted throughout the entire school was lower than the exposure hazard level, 101 relative light units. So there was not a concern, even in areas where there was previously mold growth that we know. It was cleaned. Visually, it was fine. We tested it with the swabs to show that it was fine. And we went one step beyond that, testing with a laser particle counter and doing air testing. Now, why do we do air testing? As I stated previously, there is no guideline. There is no level. If you are exposed to 1,000 spores of mold per cubic meter, is this bad? Well, no, it's not necessarily bad. If you go down to Home Depot and buy a box or a bag of mulch, and you open it in your front yard, you're exposing yourself to millions of spores of mold. And guess what? When you do the garden work outside, you don't go inside and hack all day. It's long-term abnormal amounts of environmental exposure that we're concerned about. And when we're able to show through, and we didn't just take a couple samples. We sampled every single room in the entire school. And without exception, every single room in the entire school was below the outdoor exposure level, which is what our background was. And the laboratory vendor that we use also associates whether it's elevated or not. They say normal, they say slightly elevated, which we don't feel is scientifically or statistically upsetting to us at all. It's not scientifically an issue that brings us to a point to say that additional remediation is necessary. But there were no red flags at all. But part of the reason that we do the surface testing in concert with the air testing is so that we can say, to a reasonable degree of scientific certainty, that the building or structure in question is not presenting exposure hazards. That's what our opinion is, and we stand behind it. Not just with my visual assessment. John Evans says there's no mold, but with having a third-party laboratory analyze the samples that we collected.
Are you monitoring the humidity levels in the building also?
Our engagement was limited to sample collection on September 19th. However, based on our inspection and my interview with Elliot, which was conducted as part of a comprehensive inspection, he indicated to me that data logging is taking place in the classrooms where this IAQ equipment is placed. And that is data logging temperature and relative humidity. And I believe that that also gives Elliot a notification of if there's a spike that could cause an environmental condition like mold growth on stuff in a classroom.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Elliot, would you like to explain to the board how your humidity sensors are going to be working as a long-range program?
The district has a limited number of data loggers available to us that we've started using since the inception of our energy program. It tracks relative humidity and room temperature over a long period of time. We have them in the corridors of North Park and in a select number of classrooms. We are ordering enough of them to put them in every classroom space in the building. And what that'll allow us to do is track and trend that over a long period. The dehumidifiers that we put into the room have humid stats on them and allow us for an instant read, just as a visual inspection as we walk the building. But with the sensors that we're going to install, we'll be able to dial into any one of them and see, and look back and see what... You know, I don't know the frequency of the read, but over days or weeks at a time, we can check that. And that's part of the plan that we have drafted as going forward to prevent this type of an issue from happening in the future.
Do you have any current figures about what the humidity levels are?
We've been maintaining 40 to 50% in the building. And that's been, Elliot Sheldon has been checking the building pretty regularly at the startup time. In the Hyde Park town, and specifically in the region around North Park, in the last two to three weeks, it's not uncommon to find relative humidity north of 90%, especially in the overnight hours between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. When Elliot walks the building at 6:00 or 6:30, he's finding 45% on average in the building. Once the building system's ventilation plant energizes, we are bringing in outside air, so that number may climb a little bit into the mid-50s. But we have been able to keep it under 60% with all of the equipment that we've added. And again, I think John can probably confirm this. The goal is to keep the relative humidity under 60% for a 24-hour period. So we don't want to go 24 hours with it above 60%. And even when all the doors open at dismissal and at student entry, for those little times in the day, by and large, over 12 hours, 16 hours, we're able to get it back under 55% and keep it there.
Okay, and Juliana, thanks, Elliot. Juliana, the way, the presentations that are given to the board are meant to present to the board, and the board can ask questions and receive answers. When it comes to public participation, we're in strict rules where the public gets to then address the board's or questions we do not answer until we actually close public participation. Then we can respond. It's not meant for a two-way dialogue, but the presentations are meant as information to the board, and the board asks questions back and forth.
Yeah, and just technically, a board of education...
Yeah, and just technically, a Board of Education meeting is a meeting in front of the public, but it is the board's meeting. So, the public is invited to attend and observe. And we do offer public participation. It's not required, but we do offer it two times per agenda. But technically, the board has to conduct their business in public. So, that's why it looks and feels a little bit different. So, we are technically conducting our business in front of the public, which is one further explanation to help why the board is allowed to ask and answer questions.
And as for Steve's comment, I really do hope with that we will have a long-range program to keep all of this new science stuff going and continuing for many, many years. So, there was a question. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add on that because I, every opportunity I get, I like to take that. The State Education Department does a great job of funding capital projects. They do a horrible job of providing maintenance. Facilities and operations receive zero aid. Everything that's done to maintain the buildings, everything that's done to work on buildings beyond capital project is all done with local funding. It makes no sense to me. I've worked in the industry my entire life. Private sector knows for every dollar spent on preventative maintenance, it returns $4 to $10 in future savings, either in energy or maintenance cost. And I'm hoping that someday State Education Department will get on that and realize it. To that point, when we build these projects, and part of the reason that the cost is as high as it is, if you've worked in private sector and then you start working in the, in the public sector and working on projects, the numbers are scary sometimes per square foot. And part of it is because of the material cost, trying to use the highest quality materials available, be it door hardware, valves, plumbing fittings, everything. Because the whole idea is that you're really designing something, and you're looking for, you know, a life expectancy of, you know, of 40 years or perhaps more. And, I mean, we've got a classic example. The labs that we are replacing were put in a long time ago.
Fifty years ago.
Fifty years ago.
I'm wondering if you guys could answer the question about the ceiling tiles and is, are they asbestos?
So, every district in the state is supposed to have reports of where hazardous materials, asbestos, are in, within the building. Where we don't have that information, what we do is we bring in an outside hazardous materials consultant who we are bringing on the team. They will have to sample every area that we may disturb. So, that is an ongoing process right now. If we find that that material is asbestos, which is, if it's a concealed spline ceiling, it's not likely to be an asbestos ceiling. If it had, if it was stuck with what they call glue dabs, those glue dabs, which are black typically, are generally those, that material is asbestos material. Our consultant will come in, they will sample the materials, they will test the materials, and if it is asbestos, we will have to remove the material under a containment. Students will not be in the building during that time. It'll be done during a construction season, and will be removed so that the project can move, can move forward. So, there are processes and procedures in place to be sure that if a material is hot, as we call it, it's removed under proper, proper procedures. I can't answer for you tonight whether it is or not. That's going to be the job of our consultant. I can tell you that the material that's there is not in a friable state, which, if it is even asbestos at this point, if it's a friable state, that means that it is a, an asbestos material issue. But that is not the case. You're not going to have those in school buildings that are currently occupied. So, it would only become friable if we were to disturb it during a construction project.
Thank you. And Greer, could you explain the title change for the HR?
Yeah. It was interesting. We've been doing a lot of work in that area. In the summer, some of our board members had the opportunity to go down with Aviva for some training, and it was really well attended by several school districts throughout the state. So, when our Director of Human Resources resigned, we had an opportunity to re-craft the position. And I actually am making the final edits on that. The board had asked that if we're going to change the title, that the job description matches. So, what we've done is we've taken a typical Director of Human Resources job description and layered in the equity piece. So, it's literally right now in its final edit stages. But what is complete is the distinguishing characteristics of the equity piece. So, if you want, I'll share it now. The Director is responsible for developing and implementing short and long-range cultural diversity plans, planning, directing, and monitoring programs, policies, and processes that promote and sustain diversity, equity, and respect. The Director will assess potential barriers and develop strategies focused on recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce. The Director will collaborate with other administrators to design training initiatives on cultural competency and other topics designed to increase awareness and support of equity and inclusion values. The Director will serve as advisor and resource person for management and staff in the areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and intake and investigation of concerns that pertain to discrimination or harassment. So, then there's essential tasks. The Director will attend relevant conferences for recruiting a diverse workforce, will develop strategies to, for recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. The Director will network with prospective candidates, will manage an ongoing database of prospects, and will maintain regular contact with potential candidates. Coordinate and develop effective communication strategies to enhance and support cultural diversity and issues of equity. Serve as a resource and a point, and/or a point of contact for the development of celebrations and recognition activities of diversity-related events. Knowledge, skills, and ability. Knowledge of issues relating to diversity, cultural proficiency, recruitment, and equity affairs. Knowledge of local, state, and federal laws related to schools, employment, and protected classes. Ability to work with diverse populations within the organization and the community. Strong written and oral, where's my place here? Communication skills. Ability to manage thoughtfully the personal, political, and organizational dynamics related to equity issues within the Hyde Park Central School District. Ability to analyze facts and present recommendations effectively. The Director must have a capacity for teamwork and for developing sensitive working relationship with potential employees and members of the community. So, that is, that piece is now embedded in the traditional Director of HR job description. So, you'll have that. It's, like I said, it's in the final editing stages. And then that will be posted, you know, where appropriate, where we house our other job descriptions.
And the board will vote on acceptance of this job description?
Um, I don't, I don't know if it's a voting thing.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, you establish the position. I don't know if it's a voting thing, but.
We'll check into it.
Yeah.
So, anybody else has any more comments? Okay, we'll move on to board discussion.
Steve had one more question.
Steve had one more?
Steve had one more. We're not in the medical business, so we don't, you know, there's been, we can't correlate that. Many people have allergies, and we deal with them, whether you're facing indoor or outdoor air.
So, we'll go on to 9.1, Board Subcommittee Reports. Anybody have any Subcommittee Reports? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Safe travels.
No Subcommittee Reports?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go on to 9.2, Board Goals.
Thank you, John.
So, here's Board Goals for Academics. Dan, were you able to work anything on this yet?
Unfortunately, I planned on doing it this week, and I had a personal issue developed that I had to take care of this week, so I will get to it.
At the next board meeting?
At the next board meeting.
Okay.
That's a new goal for you, Dan?
I was actually going to commit and say my dog.
Come on, Dan.
My dog ate the paper, but I don't have a dog.
Okay, is there any changes you guys that you would want to include from what we came up with in academics for the second part? Okay, for the Board Administrative Operations. So, conduct a board retreat that includes all admin group topics, diversity and equity. All Board of Ed members will attend at least one professional development training, a webinar, or some other type of training. Budget and administration. We're keeping the same goals. Keep the budget to maintain as many programs as possible. Given the tax cap, any spending reduction should be distributed with equity. Focus closely on the actual spending instead of projected rollover. Okay, for community. Last year's goal, conduct a community night at each school, personal schedule permitting. I assume that meant we should go to one community night?
Yeah, that's what it meant.
Yeah.
At least one.
Each board member should attend one community night at each school. Not at each school. Each should attend one community night at any school. How do you add on with that?
Probably should add the fact that we probably will want the distribution of board members so that we cover every community night.
And they're called various things, so, but, yeah. Like, some of them are called Student Expo, or, you know.
Right. I would suggest that building principals give us a heads-up, or schedule a meeting, a meeting thing, something that alerts us that that is happening. I mean, I usually get them, you know, from the calendar, but not everybody does that. So, it would be helpful if everybody was either reminded that, hey, this week there's a community night, just to see. I mean, might improve attendance. There's a reason why we are, you are on that side, and I'm way over here.
No. That's how, that's how to make the goal. So, I would say each board member will attend at least one community night.
Personal schedules permitting.
Personal scheduling permitting, yep.
October 17th is a community night, folks, for the whole district.
Does the football game tomorrow night count?
That's as big a community event as the high school has.
There are other, other things than just community nights.
Board meetings.
There is board meeting. And before the next board meeting, the day before, and the day of, Greg Tang is in town, and that's something you can go. And since I have done that in the past, it's, he's fascinating. He's a really interesting guy. So, I mean, there's just, there's tons of stuff. Should be able to fit one in your schedule.
I'd like you to finish that sentence.
Yes. Okay, so we go on to facilities. Are we going to keep these two the same? Receive a formal presentation from the Energy Educator in January, including comparison to past year's usage and cost. Number two, receive a mid-year update on the state of the district facilities. It should include a snapshot of facility issues of the greatest concern.
I would ask that the first one include, if possible, any references to capital improvements that have been made in the building that have assisted in improvements. You know, we put a whole bunch of new controls in at the high school without changing the heating plants to allow us to adjust the temperatures in the rooms. And I'd be interested in understanding if, did it eliminate or remove complaints about, you know, heating issues between classrooms? Or more specifically, can we correlate the arrival of the new controls to any effect on the consumption of energy in the building? As our balancing it out and stuff like that, any effect? And as we monitor the fuel consumption from year to year, we should be able to adjust that based on the temperatures that has existed for the previous year, to come out with an average and see, did it change in any way from the first, the year before to the year after we had the controls in place?
So, we're going to change this to the formal presentation to include past year's uses and costs, and then especially in pertaining to the areas of building improvements.
In that area, heating and, yeah.
I will only warn that with all of these new HVAC improvements that we're making, we are going to be raising our systems to meet the new ashtray standard, which actually requires us to do significantly more ventilation in the buildings than we are today. So, all of the energy savings that we're gaining by having more efficient equipment, at least a portion of that will be lost, if not all of that will be lost, in the fact that we'll be having to move that much more air through the building. I mean, and I look, you know, we'll look for, I mean, I'm sure that we'll get, if nothing else, we can get a communication of what's been done in a particular building and what might have improved.
But we should see an improvement in the quality of the...
Yeah. I would say that you will see a quality, air quality improvement throughout the district, or anywhere that we, we change the HVAC systems. But, I agree. I think it's good to have that, and if there can be tie-in, if we can, if we can tie it in, that would be great.
So, Jay was reminding us that she wasn't able to do it in January. Do we want to push it back later in the year?
I don't think, is there any magic, you know, quite frankly...
Yeah, it could be any, whenever.
I would, I'd almost look to do it in the spring, when you get out, once you're out of the heating season. So, you've got, you know, perhaps, you know, the spring is probably the least costly from a utility standpoint.
Should we just leave it as we've seen one formal presentation? Or you, do you want to date on this?
I don't need to nail it down to the time. I'm fine with the...
Anybody else need it to a time?
At a time that's, works for both schedules.
So, we'll just take it out in January?
So, number two, we were talking about that one?
Okay, what do you want to change?
The mid-year update. Since we kind of highlighted maintenance earlier in the meeting, is it possible we can understand what the plan is currently to maintain our various pieces of equipment? You know, if, if we're, if traditionally boards don't care about maintenance, then maybe we should start caring. And maybe there's a way that we can be presented with information that allows us to plan for future ongoing maintenance, if the budget, especially in the budget process. So, if we could...
So, you want to write that up as a number three, and then present it to us for the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, I had this, I requested this last year, and my point in requesting it was just to literally, the word snapshot is in there, is literally to get an idea of what was being done in our buildings, you know, project-wise, anything, anything major, just a snapshot. You know, we had to do this, just a quick thing, and we fixed this. Nothing nitty-gritty. I wasn't looking for minute detail regarding all the maintenance. I just wanted to know if there was something going on in the district that needed to be addressed, and what was going on, and what the plan was for the year. It was just a snapshot of general things that were happening in our buildings.
Actually, I would ask a question. Would we, is that something perhaps we want to get more often, and not make it such a, you know, single voluminous report, but rather, you know... you know, similar to the journals, you know, what's going on? Just, you know, give us a little narrative of what's going on in the world of F and O. You know, whether it's, you know, monthly, quarterly, you know, something to where it gives an opportunity for facilities to raise their hand and say, you know, here's something you should know about, good or bad.
We could have facilities put that in once a month and attach it to Linda's journal since she oversees that department.
It does not belong, could be, could be a single page, maybe, you know, double-sided with, you know, here's the projects we're working on, here's a challenge we're facing, you know, maybe some simple subjects of, you know, staffing, professional development, major projects, emergencies, something that, you know, gives us a better insight as to what's going on.
And we wouldn't want it here done in a meeting?
I don't know. I mean, you could, my point is that I think that, you know, get it, get it in a journal, and, you know, maybe once a year, you do a, the snapshot, so to speak, maybe it's a wrap-up of all the things.
Elevate awareness, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll keep the snapshot in there?
Yeah, but I would say if we just want to raise it to, you know, whether it's monthly or quarterly, journal entry.
Okay.
But it has to tie in with the budgeted, whatever money we budgeted to that F and O, and I recall offhand how much we budget for maintenance, and if that's not enough, then maybe people start telling us that, you know, it's really essential that we need, we need to up this, this part of the budget.
Well, so, so maybe one of the categories is opportunities, you know, lost opportunities.
Okay.
You know, tell us what, tell us what we didn't give you enough money to do, that, and why it would be valuable.
We have money to burn, right, Linda? We just add stuff to the budget.
So, who's going to write that? So, Doug, you going to write that?
Yeah, I've already taken a note here of that.
Okay. Next section is policy, so, Policy Committee. Why don't you guys take a shot at this?
I don't know exactly where we stand with all, updating all the technology policies right now.
We did that.
Did we, did we get them all done?
Yeah, yeah, we did that.
Okay, I wasn't exactly sure, so I, I know that we're working really hard to start with, start with the older, you know, anything that hasn't been reviewed, and to cut, you know, to really bring it up to date.
Number two ought to say, attempt to keep up with.
Right, yeah.
There are, I do think we keep up with the more important ones.
I just don't like a third goal of an attempt.
Well, there's two issues at work here. One, we're trying to go back, and anything that hasn't been reviewed, you know, in five years, we're trying to update all of those. But the second issue is the ones that are recommended by NISBA that we, that we definitely touch on. So, we're, we're constantly juggling between those two goals.
So, is it, as far as the NISBA, is it a matter of just reviewing new policies being recommended by NISBA?
And ones that are changed as well.
And acting, and then making recommendations on those policies?
Many times, it's their change because the law changed, education law changed.
Right, and those are the ones that we'd want to act on.
That's the ones we have to redo.
And we have to, right.
But some of them are not. Some of them are a result of something that's going on somewhere in the state, and it's been drafted, and they pushed it out, and it may not be relevant or necessary.
And Jay has done a really good job of prioritizing the ones that we work on, and it would be wonderful if we could do them all, but it's really not feasible.
Yep. So, I like just keep up with the flow of incoming policies from NISBA.
We have, Jay, you've already identified everything that's five years or older, that we did.
They're identified.
Yeah, they're already identified.
But that change is every year.
That change is, yeah, every year.
Yeah, I know, but Jay has been keeping that up.
Right.
Okay.
So, we can take out the, review all the technology policies, that's been done.
Yep.
I would just go with number two and leave the other two out. I mean, that's a lot of work.
Well, we can say, we can, we can say continue to update the list, you know, to update-
Well, so, number three was to make a list of policies.
Yeah.
Now, what do you do with them?
We can, right, exactly, we can address that list, where it was, you know, that's what we're doing.
So, review and-
We have, we have that list, we already have that list.
No, that's my point is, so, should the policy perhaps be, or should the, the goal be perhaps to-
Right. Here's kind of the way that I see it happening, and which we've been doing. We have to get the important ones done. When there's a small gap in there, then we work on the ones that are five years old. Or, if Jay has already looked at them and said, you know, it's been five years, but nothing really needs to be changed, and that, we can update the date and bring it to the board to be, you know, we, those you can do fast.
So, you're prioritizing and evaluating, editing as necessary-
Right.
From that five-year list.
With the extra time, because Jay is so efficient, then we try, we knock off ones off that list.
Okay.
So, I would just keep it simple. I would say continue to review the list of policies that are older than five years old.
Okay, fine.
So, we remove one, keeping two, and three we're changing to continue to review.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And for the technology. Have we gone through all the tech bond, are we still getting updates?
No, we still have more.
So, are we going to keep, are we still going to, can we save two updates then?
I think there's probably valuable to continue. I mean, that's, that's almost a perpetual issue. I mean, technology is going to continue to change, and-
I think it would be kind of helpful, or how, some kind of presentation on how they're incorporating this into critical thinking and the technology use. Does some kind of presentation to the board as they're changing, as we're moving critical thinking and moving further?
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
We had, if you'll recall-
Yeah, we did have one.
We had a wonderful presentation by Kelly Gould, I believe, that was really wonderful, and, and if you were just hearing that, you would think, wow, this district is way ahead of everything. But she was an exception. I'd like to know how, on average, how things are going, and where, and are the people who have picked it up, are they helping other people to do the same? You know, how are we migrating the knowledge and enthusiasm that people just get it right away? And a lot of people don't, and, you know, then struggle with it. What are we doing for those people? I think that that would be a good idea.
Well, that's a question, who, who's able to identify, or to be able to-
That's another question, yeah.
To state what we're doing, you know, is it directors? You know, would it be?
Yeah, well, it would certainly come out of Rick's department, but just as a reminder, we hire through BOSI's tech integrators, and if you remember from Rick's report last year, he definitely quantifies how many people have gone to training sessions, how many people have gone to one-on-one sessions, how many classrooms they've been invited in. So, that could definitely come under that, and as for the critical thinking, I'm sure we could, but I'm not sure if it's, if the, it might already even be set up in that way.
I can go, I can go to a class on something, and I can sit there and listen to it, it doesn't mean I'm going to go back and actually use it.
Right.
And I would like to know what, how that-
Yeah.
Which is a normal thing, but how, how that, that we are addressing the fact that, do we go back and say, are you using that thing that we just, we just had a PD on how to use Google Classroom? Are you actually using it? You know, something in that area. And tech could, tech could actually know that, because they, they do have statistics on what programs are being used and where.
Right. It's a simple survey, that kind of information is a simple survey, too, yeah.
I think it was something worthwhile of our student board member find out from the students, the impression of what's for the technology. I can't put that into his hands, he's not here, but, but I think it's something worthwhile we should talk next meeting when he comes back.
Yeah, I mean, how far do you want to go with that, right?
Well, yeah.
Who's going to talk if six kids?
So, so, is the goal perhaps to develop a method of evaluating the success of introducing technology and using technology in the classroom? Is that what we're really looking for?
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, so now the question is, who's appropriate to do that? And I don't know that it's one person. I mean, technology can say, this is what we've given them, but then, you know, I think of, you know, as administrators are doing observations, you know, that's one way of seeing, how was, how was technology being used, you know, during that observation?
Can that be discussed during what used to be DLT meetings? And, I mean, I don't want to give them a job, but, or me, actually, I'm on the committee. Wait a minute, forget that.
However you word the goal, we'll, we figure out how to get it done.
We're going to table this one to the next meeting, so think about it, and see how we can come back on that.
And maybe we'll ask Rick to be here, just, I know it's certainly not just Rick, but he's got a really good sense of-
But I think, so maybe, maybe the goal is to, is for Rick to develop a matrix to evaluate the successful implementation of technology in the classrooms, you know?
I've given you a big screen in your classroom.
Yeah.
What are you doing?
Are you using it?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you just watching TV, or you, is it interactive?
What is it about that screen that makes it not user-friendly for you, you know, that kind of thing?
I have, I just have to tell you about a faculty meeting I observed last year at North Park. It was one of Lynette's, real early on faculty meetings. She actually invited students in who were teaching the staff how to use the interactive screen, and it was just, it was, it was great to see the kids-
Good idea.
-leading a faculty meeting, and it was, that's as good as it gets.
I was in a classroom in Ralph Smith this spring, and the teacher did not know how to get data from her PC to the big screen. And, so she didn't use it, because she had no clue how to do it.
And again, those screens were put up last year, so I'm hoping by now she knows, but, you know, just, again, so people know that, that the interactive screens were brand-new last year, and, but that's the type of thing you want to know. If we put them in, how many people actually really are using them and getting their data up there? So, you don't want to find out that they've been up there and nobody knows how to put their data up there.
I mean, she was using for other things. I mean, it wasn't like it was sitting there, but, and, and she didn't ask. She said, well, I didn't know, I said, well, tech, tech will come, and they'll send somebody, they'll show you exactly how to do it.
Yep.
Well, that's where, that's where the integrators are really, that's what they're there for.
Yep, yeah.
Well, borrowing from this concept, I was, I was thinking before we started talking about this, that I would really like to hear from Patrick, our student board member, about what he might think could be a good goal for all of us.
Yep.
So, I'd like to encourage him to maybe come to the next meeting with some, some topics or suggestions.
It might be too soon. I can see him doing that come this, I know, but he's been to one meeting so far.
No, no, I, no, but I want, I want his student perspective, I mean, as far as, you know, what, what does he think some of the, the board should be paying attention to? You know, I mean, just-
Yeah, I'm just going to give him a chance to have a little bit more experience before he gives us that.
Well, but he's been a student a long time.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want his, I don't want his opinion as a board member.
I see where Denise is going. I mean, I, I agree that his comfort level in expressing his thoughts may be limited based on his short term, but I think that he, you know, if, if given the right opportunity and the right environment, I think he might come across with-
I can see him coming with stuff that, you know, the high school would be a whole lot better if this, 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 and this. But I can't see him giving us goals when he hasn't really participated enough. These are our board goals. They're supposed to be goals that we either ask about, or we, that are for us.
Yes, but it's also his job to, as representing of the students, giving us also guidance from the student's point of view. So, it is, we don't have to adopt his goal, but it is something maybe we need to hear what the students may think.
And I'm not sure that he'll frame it as a goal as much as he may frame it as an observation, or-
I can see, we, we had last year, our board rep said, you know, athletes shouldn't have to take gym. But that's not a goal, but that's certainly a wonderful suggestion that we acted on. So, I think it's two different things, that's all. But, if you want, we can, you can-
I guess it was more my thought, just, you know, for him to say, you know, what, as a student, you know, does he think the Board of Education should be paying attention to?
Yeah, that's probably-
Yeah, more than that, you know what I mean, just as a conceptual thing. And we can adopt it as a goal or not, you know, but it might be goal-worthy, we don't know what he's going to say.
Okay.
Yeah.
In a similar vein, I think-
Do you want to shoot him an email?
Somewhere in our board goals, we should have some mention of the fact, I think one of the ten best presentations I've ever heard, sitting in this chair, occurred last year, and it was from a student, it was from our board rep last year, who gave us a presentation on the effectiveness and benefit of foreign languages at the elementary school level, and challenged us to look into it.
Yeah, that was good.
You know, that thing is, that, that challenge was thrown in our face, and it's still there.
Yeah.
December board meeting. Well, yeah, it's already a goal for Jen and I, so you can put it here, but you're going to have a presentation anyway.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, I just want to point it off on it, you know?
No, but you can add it here if you want.
And, you know, that, that, it's a, I hope it understands, a high praise, I feel, because, you know, this is my 18th year on the board, and I list that presentation as one of the 10 best I've ever heard.
She's amazing.
Okay, so are we going to move on?
Yep.
So, Section 10, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh...
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education Placements?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I reviewed the packet as presented and recommend its adoption as it, as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
And I wish they were all the same size.
Yeah, they change in size quite a bit. Can I have a motion for 11.2, CSEA Memorandum of Agreement?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, Vendor Agreement with CBIZ? Did I pronounce it? Yeah, okay.
Some move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, Overnight Field Trip at Plymouth in Boston, Mass?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Upfront, it states that children who cannot afford it will be accommodated some way, but inside the field trip venue thing, the, you know, what was happening each day, the schedule, sorry, there were sections where it said, breakfast, you're on your own.
Pay on your own.
Yeah, lunch, you're on your own, where, are they, if a child can't afford to go, are they also being given spending money for- Are they, if a child can't afford to go, are they also being given spending money for meals? That's the only question I have.
We'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
And it's more of an observation, I thought it was a relatively small number of students.
Yeah, this year it seems really small.
Yeah, it's one class, it's one class.
Yeah.
Oh, two classes, right.
Yeah, you know, just, I mean, thinking about the, how many students were eligible to go to this? You know, how, how large was the population that would have been?
The, the American Studies class typically is, is small in number. I believe there were only about 11 or 12 of them in the class that was two or three years ago, too, also, you know what I mean? It's traditionally not a regular-sized class. I don't, I don't, this number didn't really stand out to me.
Okay. Yeah, I have to admit, it's not one that I, you know, it doesn't come to me, when I, just as I'm looking at it and thinking of it as a field trip, it seemed like a relatively small number of students.
Yeah, this class is traditional, even, even going back two years before that for my daughter, too, also a small-sized class.
Okay.
Now, is this class still providing some additional reports on, at the end of the year that most schools don't, or either a video or something like that?
They, they do a film project and they all present their, their films at Upstate Theater at the, in June, open to everybody.
And a lot of that, and a lot of support of that, those films come from like this kind of field trip. I mean, there's an awful lot of area being covered up there, and I, I would have needed a scooter to keep up with them.
It's an unbelievable class.
I know.
It really is, I...
It's intense, so it doesn't feel too...
It's hard to get into.
And it is, it's a lot of work, I mean, the kids work really hard and...
My daughter loved it.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah, but, but traditionally small. You know, what, what's great about the class is what discourages some kids about the class do, it's really a lot of hard work, it definitely steps things up, so...
So Doug, are you going to want to hold off until you get an answer to your question or do...
No, that was...
No, no, I think we should, I just, I think you can, I was just curious, I mean, it, you know, it didn't occur to me, I, all these trips are usually, you know, somebody pays for the bus and, you know, and everything's kind of included, but they specifically said, you're on your own for lunch and breakfast. So, we're just a question, no, I would not hold it up for, for that.
So, and was this the entire, all the students in that class, or are there some students in the class that did not go?
We'll check.
That's a good question.
Traditionally, they, they all go.
Traditionally, they all go, but...
I would hope that they would all go, I guess that would be part of my concern is, is if, you know, being, particularly the fact that it was being done during the academic day, and if they're not, what are those students doing for those days?
I'm pretty sure they all go, but we'll double-check on all that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Opposed?
Motion pass. Can I have a motion for 11.5, health and welfare expenditure?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion pass. Can I have a motion for 11.6, receipt of revenues from nicer?
So moved.
Second. With pleasure.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion pass. Can I have a motion for 11.7, appointment of voting delegate for the NISBA annual meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you want to say anything, Denise?
Thank you. Well, just that, just that I'm, I'm looking forward to going to the annual meeting, and I'll be bringing, what I'll do next meeting is I'll have the issues that I'll be voting on, and we can all discuss it next meeting, and you can all tell me how you want me to represent you.
Is that something we're going to need to get a foil into your presentation here? Is that something you're going to need to get Jay so we can all...
Oh, I don't think that's going to be necessary at all. I'm sure, I'm sure we can just talk about it.
Give her a board and a piece of chalk and she's on her way.
Is there any more discussion?
Within 10 minutes.
A soapbox, and away she goes.
Six slides, six books, six balls, six slides, six balls.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to reopen public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion pass. This is your second chance, if anybody would like to readdress the board, they're welcome to.
Jessica Patterson, again. One thing I wanted to suggest maybe for the technology goal, I know you were discussing how you wanted more student and staff, has anybody thought about sending out a survey to students throughout the different levels of the schools, whether it's high school and how much they're utilizing it versus middle school? And I know that, you know, the smart boards being in the elementary level, and also on a staff level of saying, where are the problems of why you're not utilizing it to its full potential? You know, where do you need help with that? Because I mean, there are some, you know, I looked at these smart boards, I'm like, huh. You know, I mean, so for being even of my age and of everybody else's age, the technology is changing, so you have to, I guess, kind of adapt, but do they, are they allowed that much time and training to adapt to it? So maybe a survey to the staff members and students to say, hey, what would you guys like to see our technology changed to, or where are you struggling to utilize it? Like, I can say, as far as the Chromebooks, my daughter can't utilize it without being home.